...one. Other towns actually have a full department, so a zoning officer, again, she's feathering that into his regular workload.
Right.
A hearing officer has been Ron Stevens. So, once it gets from zoning, it's been determined it's a blight, and we call it blight, the homeowner has a right to a hearing, an appeals hearing, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to have one of those folks appointed, and that will be Mr. Stevens, who's a attorney in town, semi-retired, maybe? And that is not a paid position.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mark. We'll move to reports from the Board of Ed. I don't know, do we have anyone from the board? Okay?
No. You look like a board.
Yeah, I have my source, and I'm not here for that. They haven't appointed anyone here.
Oh.
I'll make note, because we haven't met since June 30th, that the paperwork to put in for school reimbursement and the plan did not go through. I'm sure you read the paper. I'm sure you know, because you're involved in town, the government. So, the school, and I think the board, had decided, "We're not going to go forward with the plan immediately," so the paperwork did not go in. So, it will not be coming to you quickly to go to a referendum in the fall. More to come. That's its best left set.
I do have a question, that I don't know if it would be appropriate for you to address it to Jeff, or, I'm not sure. But, I thought we were not hiring another kindergarten teacher, and then I read in the paper yesterday that we were. I thought, I'd read in the minutes of the June meeting, that we were going to pull a teacher from Flanders or Lily Bay. And I didn't know if you talked with, I don't know where that money's coming from, or, don't know.
Through their budget, or, I don't know. I don't know. It's, I didn't go to the last meeting, and it's purely on them.
All right. Thank you.
But, their numbers have spiked, and their enrollment is spiked.
Their enrollment went up.
So, they are justifying that because of numbers. Where it's coming from, I don't know.
Right. The plan was to have a no-cost-to-the-town solution to that, and now that situation's different. I just don't know what changed, and...
I think the enrollment numbers changed. I don't want to defend them, but...
No. This, the plan was to pull a teacher from the other two schools to address the increase in enrollment, so that it would be a no-cost-to-town. Now, we're hiring one. I'm not really understanding why.
I think the enrollment went higher than it was this year. The enrollment for coming in for next year has spiked even more, another 20 kids than they planned on. I think it's just a numbers thing. Did they lose a fourth-grade teacher? I don't know.
Either way, it's internally in their budget for this fiscal year.
It was my perception, is that they were replacing somebody they lost.
Say that again, please?
It was my perception that they lost teachers, and that the hires was replaced. The net was going to go down one, but if they lost three, they'd still have to hire two. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That was my perception.
Okay. I guess I need more information, but...
How to handle it within your budget?
They said, yeah.
Jurisprudence.
Anna?
Good evening. I'll just go over some items that we put in your green folder. There is an update, well, it's an updated package that Flanders Fire prepared. However, I'll point out that the information, it contains all of the information that was included in your packages, and then there's a little bit of additional information. As I understand it, it's additional quote information related to repairs that would need to be done to the apparatuses that the department is looking to replace. And then, we did a rating call, and we had a bond sale in the month of June. So, there's a copy of our rating report from Moody's in your green folder. Then, with the auditor sent the commitment letter, which, and a communication to the board relative to the upcoming audit, so I put a copy of that in your folder. And then, I didn't do the typical month-end report that I do for the board, because we're still working through the end of the fiscal year. But, what I did do, and I put it in your green folders, is a listing of all the revenues and expenditures greater than $10,000 in the month of June, which is typically what's provided to you. I will point out that Parks and Rec had a great month. They took in a little over $88,000 in June, and their revenues for the fiscal year capped over $190,000. That's like a banner year for them. They came in at over $56,000 more than the original projected amount.
Terrific.
So, that's, that's a good thing.
Is that in the special revenue account, or?
General fund.
I like it.
General fund.
I like it. You knew I was going to ask that, Dave.
If, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the reports, and if you have questions?
Do you have any areas of concern you'd like to bring to our attention?
Um...
I've never heard that.
Pardon?
It's always the right question to ask.
They just have a copy they can leave. Okay. Just, I mean, we, everyone, you know, for the most part, we came in within budget. There's a couple of over-expended areas that we need to take care of, but we'll be able to handle everything within, within budget.
Neil?
Okay. Anna, the sheet, the sheet that you provided to us, those are all of the items that are already reflected in the, in the year-end draft report? For example, the financials that you gave us are grass.
Right.
So, these numbers on this sheet are reflected in the numbers on this draft report?
There, there were some, I believe there were some, you know, additional postings after that report was created.
Okay. So, I, my two general questions for you are, the draft revenue report?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have an indication of how final that number is? So, right now, it looks like, well, if you're putting the 650 back into the fund.
So, would be...
Let me ask this a different, let me ask this a differently. If I take the numbers on your reports, the draft reports, and I subtract the expenses as reported, from the revenues as reported, there is a delta of $1.6 million.
Right. But, I'll point out, for the next 60 days, we're taking care of remaining June 30th payments that are going to need to be paid that haven't been paid yet, of which, the Board of Ed still has about $1 million out in outstanding payables.
That was my question.
Yes.
So, what are the accruals that haven't hit the report yet? And you're saying there are about $1 million of outstanding bills that haven't hit this expenditure report?
Well, that's, that's just related to the Board of Education. So, and the town, we have, what, I think about $400,000 remaining in encumbrances. We have $444,000. Not all, some of those encumbrances will be liquidated, meaning there's a higher number encumbered than we'll actually need.
Okay. So, that would mean that these expenses would come down a little further?
They could, yes.
Okay. And so, that delta would get even a little greater. So, I'm just wondering, how did you determine that approximately $650,000 would be returned to the general fund?
What I had, what I, what I do is, I look at expenditures year-to-date, and what we've expended for the additional months that we have left to do till June 30th. And I, you know, do analysis that way.
Okay. So, you're saying up to the next 60 days, these expenses could be coming in?
Yep.
Do you think that we will be able to get final documents on year-end reports before the end of the year, this year?
I would expect so, yes.
Well, hasn't always happened in the past, so... Okay. So, just to recap, about $1 million more of expenses coming in from the Board of Ed?
Yes.
So, which will close the gap from 1.6 to about 6 and change? And that's how you came up with your number?
More or less.
More or less.
Well, it's, as I said, I take, when I start, I start doing this, like, at the end of March, April, I look at where we are to date, and look at the prior year's activities in the remaining months of the year, to kind of keep track of it, so that I can, you know, have a, have a determination of where I think, estimate will be at the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Beth? Any other questions for?
No.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Camille. New business, moving on. Special appropriation of $969,436 for the Turnkey Energy Efficient Streetlight Project. Joe?
How are you, Joe? I'm here for you. For the record, Joe Brigaud, Director of Public Works. I came before this board, I believe, last November, and talked about this whole streetlight initiative, the whole purpose. Well, it's actually two, two purposes of this. One is a financial matter, and one is the right thing to do. The financial matter is, it's cheaper to own your lights and to put LED lights up, so there's savings, and that's what, obviously, we want. The other issue is, we could be saving 80 to 90 percent of the energy that we use in the streetlights, which is the right thing to do, all over. So, back in November, we talked about it as a concept, because I didn't want to throw this at the board later, I wanted to kind of get a feeler of this concept, and I went to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and everything was trying to proceed forward. At the time, because we're kind of react right now with streetlights, we just get the bills. We don't really have a good grasp of, no one's had a really good grasp of even how many lights we have. We just get a bill. That's not the way to do business, so. Part of this process was, we sought out, there was an RFQ by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities to look into companies that do this. Tanco Lighting, we talked to them, they're doing a lot of the area towns. The next step is to do an audit, so they go out and they check every single light in town, and they verify that with CNP record, and making sure it matches up with the wattage. And we entered into contract, that was an $8,600 cost, which would be floated into this. If we didn't go forward with buying the lights, we'd owe them $8,600. We haven't paid Tanco Lighting a penny, because the whole process was, we were looking for savings. So, that all happened, took into the spring, and then, then we were sitting there waiting for CNP. We put in a request to CNP Eversource on purchasing the lights, and that didn't come till later. So, the audit came in, there was some design, and this whole going with streetlight retrofit is, they actually, they don't just change out the lights, they look at all the lights, they try to match up all the wattages throughout neighborhoods, they try to make it as efficient in what the town needs. So, here we stand tonight, I went through the Board of Selectmen a few weeks ago, is we're trying to move forward with this. It's a, it's a two-part, and it's very important to realize what we're doing. The first part of this is looking to purchase the lights from Eversource. The second part, once we purchase them, is then to have a company come in and retrofit to LEDs, and that's where you save the 80 to 90 percent of energy. When you purchase the lights from CNP, the rate structure drops 80 percent as well. There's a rate 116 that we're paying now for renting the lights, it will go to rate 117. It drops from a typical light out there, it might be $8 a month, it drops to 60 cents. That's so, I'd like to answer just a question Mr. Rando had of, okay, what's, what's going on, why are we spending the money? If we don't do anything, it's going to cost the town more money, so we should be doing this. So, just as a quick math, we spend $200,000 a year in streetlights. And what I'm proposing here is to pay this, is to buy the lights and retrofit it, and do it over seven-year payback. And the reason seven-year payback is because this is going to be paid out of the annual amount that we set aside every year, so we'll always be cash positive, so we're going to be saving money over those seven years. So, here's the money, it's seven years, we spent $200,000, it's $1.4 million. We'll be spending on the lights over the next seven years if we do nothing. To purchase them, and the maximum is $970,000, and of that, they threw in an extra $40,000 for police protection, for, to sit there with them. And I, we work well with the police, I don't think it's necessary to spend $40,000 in overtime to have the police out there. But, we'll use them on main roads when we need it, but we don't need it. So, there's contingency in police escort money that costs more than what I talked to you guys, that's why the number's a little higher this time. But, in the end, if it's about $950,000, $960,000, and it's, over those seven years, we're going to spend about $280,000 on the new cost of lights and the maintenance, we're, right off the bat, we're saving $200,000, $220,000, $230,000 by going for this initiative. In the eighth year, it's all savings, then we save $180,000. So, I was trying to answer the question, Mr. Rando, if we, it's much easier to do nothing, and we'll just spend more. This is the right thing to do, so it's not some kind of thing that's showing up the agenda to slide it through. This is, this is a good initiative. Monfill's doing it right now, New London just did it. Monfill owns their lights already, New London owns their lights. So, our project is more expensive, because we don't own our lights. A portion of this, $400,000, or $414,000, is just to pay Eversource for the lights, but that switches our rate down like 90 percent. So, Monfill's doing, as I said, New London's doing it, other towns are looking into, Vernon's in the process, a member of Bob Klein hands it to Director of Public Works, Vernon, I was going to have him here tonight, I didn't want to occupy his time, but he's gone through this whole process, he's Director of Public Works, and that town, it's a slam dunk, it's a savings for town. So, you know, unless there's any specific questions, we went to the Board of Selectmen, we're going to the Board of Finance, if this passes, we'll go to the town meeting. The next day, I'm going to send a letter to CNP saying we want to buy the lights. I got to get this thing rolling, if the commissions want to do it, because there's also a thing is, even though the $969, it's like going and putting LED lights in your house. You get the rebate check from Eversource to buy, you know, you might get a $30, $40 check. When you change out the whole town, their estimate's going to be $135,000 check to us. So, the $969 gets instantly dropped to $135,000, so the true cost is like 830. And that's, because we talked about it before the budget cycle, we did budget $122,000 for, so we're anticipating this, right? That's not free money, that's money that we anticipated, so we would like to go forward, but obviously, that's, that's, now we have the actual numbers through the audit, so we have a much better understanding of what we're up against, and that's why the numbers went up, we actually have more lights than we thought.
Sure.
Beth?
Yeah. That was one of the questions I had, because I looked at the newspaper, and I saw Monfill's cost, and I was like, gee. And looking at their square footage, and looking at ours, but that makes sense, they own the lights. When we're talking about where the money's coming from, it's built in to what you're already existing paying on your operational. So, you have, you bank $200, you believe in cost each year for the lights, and over a seven-year period, it's 1.4. And your cost to buy the lights and retrofit it would also be stretched over that seven-year period, which would go against that operating cost.
Correct.
And you would also get that, I know you get the rebates, we've done this someplace at our workplace, and get a rebate, that would come off the top of the buy-in debt. So, it's all contained in that bill. So, actually, the operational bill that you receive in the town should be a little lower than what you budgeted now.
Correct.
By spending this money.
One of the most important things that the Board of Finance said, because I know you guys want the numbers, is there's a cash flow, and it is in the package that says everything.
Yep.
This is where you make some money, so.
Yeah, very helpful.
The first year, because we're getting the rebate, is we'd be saving $146,000. The reason, again, you don't want, typically, you don't want it paced for something over seven years, you'd like to do it sooner. But, I wanted, I, my recommendation was to go with that period, because I wanted it to always be cash positive, that we're not spending any more than if we did nothing. So, I'm not going to ask for any more.
Just act like it, everything's the way it is.
And in seven years' time, which isn't that far in the future, we're going to reap substantial, substantial savings, which is when we need it.
And then, I just have one more question. I also read somewhere that there are potential ways while you're installing it to add some modifications, or whether or not they're doing that, which would lessen usage when it's not needed, you can control it more, if either a road doesn't need lights on, or at some point, or a field.
That's part of their design.
Yeah, okay.
Their design, their design optimizes everything.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's the way to go, they're not just changing out the bulbs, they're looking at the whole system and design. That's kind of why I'm here now, and not three months ago, is they've been designing the system, and we haven't paid them a penny. So, they, we're making do all the work for us, we haven't paid them a penny, but part of it is, we want to go forward and get this thing done. The sooner we get this retrofit, the sooner we're going to save money.
Right.
So, if we can go forward, there's a town meeting, I'd like to think it's heading in the beginning of August for the, and if we do that, as I said, if I put the request in to Eversource, we could get the lights purchased by September, and start doing this retrofit in like November, October. They say it'll probably take two, three weeks to retrofit the whole town. It's very quick, it's like 10 minutes a light, they just go up in there, fix it. All they're doing is going up, taking a fixture out, putting an LED fixture in, and going down.
So, this is really not unlike buying a car versus leasing one. Leasing payments are less, but overall, you pay more money over the whole use of the vehicle, so, at least, I never leased a car for that reason, but, so, I guess what I'm saying is, for me, this is a no-brainer.
Yep.
Thanks for doing the work on it. I can understand Mr. Rando's question, it looked like a lot of money. Thank you for explaining it. I, I hope that, that explanation was, was sufficient and clear to you.
Yes, it was, but it's all listed, right?
It's in a, it's in a contract.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's a maximum amount. If we, if they put in less fixtures?
Yep.
We won't pay the full amount, it's, it's, it's per the amount of fixtures they put in.
Yeah. So, so, the cash flow is very useful to see?
Correct.
Thank you for doing it, I'm in full support of this.
I just have one question. What do you do when a pole breaks? That's going to be a cost on us, right?
As far as a car hitting it?
Yeah. I mean, you owe it now.
You're the insurance company, don't tell that to Mr. Nixon.
Add those, add those on the policy.
If someone knocks out a light, there's going to be a strong case that a police car came that's going to fill out an accident report, which we bill the insurance company, which we get full reimbursement. We own the lights in, on Main Street, and people whack, since I've been here, we've hit three of those, or people have hit three of those in every single one, and we bill full cost, we bill our time, we bill everything associated with us having to do that, so we've been fully compensated for those lights, so I would think if you don't, nothing different.
Nothing different.
And if they hit a utility pole, we don't own the utility pole.
Okay.
So, the utility company has to put the pole, and all we have to do is put the bracket back on the pole.
Thank you.
The, one question I have, and it kind of, it highlights it here, so, right now, Connecticut Light and Power handles all maintenance of the poles and the lights?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so...
And they would still maintain, they would still maintain all the maintenance of the poles, we're not buying, we're not buying the utility poles, per se, in like, say, some of the neighborhoods, Darrows is one of them, there's independent streetlights that don't have any wires on it.
Okay.
We're buying those. So, if that gets hit, we own those, we would own those poles, but not a utility pole that has wires on it, some of that.
Okay, so, just, I, I get it.
There's a distinction.
Right. So, that's why you're going to have a maintenance savings, which you have identified, like in line eight, under the most current proposal of $14,381? Because if we're going to own the lights, I would imagine the maintenance would go up?
Yep, well...
And not down?
Well, part of it, well, the first few years, because, well, the first 10 years, all the, all the material costs on the LEDs is all under warranty.
Right.
But, any of the labor, and part of this proposal here is that Tanco would be the ones doing all the maintenance. So, if a light went out, they have a portal to set up that, just like you would go to Eversource right now, and if a light goes up, we don't change it. We, I go into Eversource and put in a request, they have a request system that takes care of it, they call the contractor, and that, that's put up, and that's factored into the maintenance cost. So, the first three years of this program, and we could extend that out, the maintenance is, they maintain, Tanco maintains it, not, they don't do it, they maintain it with local contractors. They get local electrical contractors to do the work.
Right. So, I guess just help clarify for me, then, then why are we going to have a $14,000 savings versus, versus currently? If you look at line item, it says key values, it says one-year maintenance cost on the front page on...
Let's see, let's see what you want there.
I'm just trying to follow this here, one-year maintenance cost savings.
That's your motion.
$14,381.
That number's not savings, that's actually the cost. That's the cost of the contract for them to maintain.
Okay.
That's not a, that's part of, there's three elements, there's paying Eversource now for the reduced to grade 117, there's paying off the loan, and then there's the maintenance cost. The numbers, the numbers that you're showing...
So, should it be a positive, or, I guess I'm not following it then? Is that, is that a type, is that, I guess it's not a...
In this cash flow right here?
Right.
This already factors in this maintenance cost of $14,000 into here.
Okay.
The true cost that you're paying Eversource for the power, for the supply, and the light is only about $28,000. If you add the 14 for the maintenance contract, it adds up to 42, which is that number. That number already factors in the maintenance contract.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, it's almost hard to fathom that we're paying $200,000 a year right now, and this is going to drop us to $30,000 a year. The caveat is buying the lights, and then changing it out to LEDs, and that's where the $900,000, so that's the big nugget to get over.
Yeah, I mean...
But, once you get over that, and that's why these other communities, everyone's jumping up, well, right now, there's 13 towns in contract and doing exactly what we do to buy the lights. And it's a race, because if you wait too long, Eversource has all their overhead, it's factored into all the lights, so more lights come off the system, you're going to pay more. So, we wait another six months, the cost to buy the lights from Eversource is going to keep going up and up and up, because there's less people, they can spread all their costs on them.
Yeah. I just had a question, I'm in full support of it, LED is absolutely the way to go, I was just trying to understand how it broke out.
But, it's already fact, the maintenance costs are, we don't want to start this and then have it fail. We want them to maintain it. That's what other towns, which was Vernon's doing, that's what Monfill's, I mean, that's what everyone's doing, is you got to have a maintenance contract, and the numbers already factor into that.
Okay.
Camille?
Actually, I'm good, thank you, Joe. I mean, this is really a great study, it lays all of the numbers out perfectly to see how much more fiscally better off will be in year eight. Just a dumb question, I mean, we're not buying the lights on, say, Route 161, because it's a state road, correct?
We are.
We are.
The town, the state does not pay for anything on the state roads. That is our, that is our obligation, our cost, and...
So, all of the poles that are going up on 161, who's, is the state paying for the poles to be?
No.
Eversource.
The utility poles are the utility companies. The lights, the streetlights are, the state looks at that, is that, it's for our community to have them, even if it's on a state road. So, no, no community has the state paying for the lights on a state road, except on an interstate or something like that. So, if you have 161, 156, all the roads, the state roads in town, all those, all those lights, we're paying for them.
That makes sense.
Yeah. They pull out.
Except, except at 95, I mean, that's, that's the state's responsibility, that's the DOT's responsibility.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, they're going.
We move a resolution of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of East Line, Connecticut, authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease-purchase agreement, and
and schedules thereto for the acquisition purchase in the amount of nine hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars plus financing costs. Financing and leasing of certain street lighting, street lighting equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith and authorizing all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries six zero. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item is the special appropriation of sixty thousand dollars for McCook's Amphitheater. Is that you, Mark?
Well, I think Dave, hopefully he's still here.
Hey, Dave.
We did have a change of, we had a bandshell meeting tonight because it was determined the original spot we wanted to bid bandshell in, which is a really beautiful natural amphitheater. Where really a bowl at McCook's falls within a section of land at McCook's that is by deed, by restriction, and you may remember this as former First Selectman, we cannot build anything within this space. And it was determined by our town attorney that it's, it's a done deal. You cannot build in this space. Where we can build is where we have built, where the bathrooms are now, where the pavilion is and to the, if you're standing next to, to the left of the pavilion toward Hole in the Wall. So where we thought we were going to put the bandshell near the water, on the way to Hole in the Wall, naturally amphitheater, we're going to put it on the great lawn instead, where there's a flat, long period of, a long space of lawn that really goes through the whole property, including where the house used to sit, right next to the pavilion. Probably in the immediate front, we could fit a thousand people. Probably in that whole space up, all the way to the flagpole, several thousand people could fit there. We're not looking for those kind of events anyway, but this is, this makes the most sense. We're not sticking in between a couple trees or, you know, in a space where we're crowding it in. This is a space that will be backed up to the railroad, if you will. So if you could, if you could picture it that way and then shooting out toward the water, toward the flagpole, the sixty thousand dollars you see, I mentioned earlier, is donated money through Lions, through their lobster fence, the Rotary, through their gala, the public trust, who's the selling of benches and now trees. We have already budgeted fifteen thousand through the town. It passed through the budget during our capital improvement program. This sixty thousand, this bandstand will, I don't see how this is going to cost us maintenance. It's a bandstand with a cement deck and, bandstand. Yes, it's going to take some work over the years, but that would be like saying we should cancel Celebrate East Lime because it costs us money. You know, it's a good event. Or we should not have the boardwalk because, yeah, it does cost us money. And these beaches cost us money. But the bandstand will be there for the town to use. I think it's a natural extension of our park service, of an enhancement to the property and to town services. And I think that, you know, as this town develops into this resort on the, on the, on the seacoast, this is a, will be a great thing. And what's great about it is eighty, eighty, I didn't do the math, you guys are the finance board, but eighty to eighty-five percent of the money to build this is coming from the, from volunteers in, in service clubs. And I think that is a home run. We've been asked by several people over the years to fundraise for things like this. And by golly, we did it this time. Very proud of that. Dave has some details for you.
Just that it's a forty-foot wide structure. The height is twenty-one feet. I can pass a picture around of what we're proposing to do.
For some reason, I don't have any.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. So originally, the original design of this was going to be overlooking eastward. You know, I know where it was going to be because the ground looks like it would be a beautiful amphitheater.
Right.
So, now if we're going to put it on the straight lawn, are we going to be able to? People come and bring chairs. I'm a little concerned that the original design of this is going to be too low and we're not going to see. So how, how are we addressing that?
We talked about bringing it up twenty-four inches. So it'd be two steps to bring it up. So you'd have a little bit of height there on it.
So...
So that was our concern too. Our...
Yeah.
We might. I was really disappointed we couldn't put it where it was.
Yeah, I know. Me too.
Because that's a great slope and a natural amphitheater to do it. This is a great Plan B. I think it's Plan One A, you know, or Plan One B, I should say. So, I think it's our best alternate location.
So, when did we learn of this easement issue?
Right before the zoning meeting.
When they voted on it years ago to buy it. It's awful of easements.
It's in the deed. It's in the deed, but the deed is a little, the way the deed reads is to preserve and maintain as nearly as possible.
That's why you don't have a concession stand there.
Yeah, so...
So you just learned this at a zoning meeting recently?
No, I learned it when, through the town attorney. I wanted to make sure that we were clear before we went ahead and built anything.
Yeah.
We had, because some questions came up about the deed. And the way I interpreted it, it was different than the way the town attorney interpreted it. So I did want to, I wanted to move forward and make sure we didn't put something where we couldn't put it.
See where that got you?
Absolutely. Well, I would hate to have built it and then someone come and say, you violated the deed.
I know. I'm kidding.
It has a reverter clause in it. I think you want to be careful.
Yeah.
Goes back to the family. You violated.
Right.
So, so I read the deed, I've read the deed a hundred times. I really have. And I interpreted it differently and so that's on me, but we didn't go forward.
No, I think it just, we, it, the plan went according to, you know, it moved along down the road, but we did our due diligence and made sure all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. And when we got to that legal piece and we brought in the attorney, because we're getting down to the end and here we go, it took a year just to come up with a design and raise the money. So, when we sat down with the attorney, you know, I think we did the proper thing. We didn't build it first. Okay, so I, Dave, don't take the hit on this.
No, I can't.
We did it, we did it. Maybe it came in a little late, the decision from the town attorney, but we did it. And we didn't build it first. We asked the questions first and we did the right thing.
And we were, we were up there tonight. The shade, at, most of our concerts go six to eight o'clock. The shade has covered the majority of that grass area with the trees there. It really is pretty spectacular. Looking at, if you're a band person and looking at that open space, it really is going to be, I think, I personally think it's going to be great.
So we don't, we're not concerned about it kind of being in the walkway? First, first let me back up and say, I echo your comments about the volunteer, the Lions and the support we got. It's terrific. And if I'm not mistaken, in the capital plan, because we were tight this year, we reduced the town's contribution to this, if I remember. I don't know if it was by five or ten thousand.
Originally...
It was originally seventy-five. It was in there for seventy-five.
Right.
And we got it to fifteen.
It's come down, it's come down, going down to twenty-five, I think.
Yeah, and then we cut another ten off because we, we didn't feel comfortable going with that amount. So, so thanks to the Lions and all the people that stepped up and took the burden off the taxpayer for that. So that, let me say that first. I just, you know, I just had concerns about changing it and then it's kind of in the walkway. I don't know if it will matter, but...
Actually, we pushed it back a little bit further.
So, so when you walk down to Hole in the Wall, it's not going to be...
No, it won't be in the middle of the walkway anymore. Nope.
Yeah.
And actually, we stopped the road now, that walkway, right on the base of that hill so that we don't have a road coming through that grass area anymore, which has really made a big difference.
Well, not a vehicular road, but people travel that way. And I was thinking if there's a show...
This is going to be behind that.
It is.
Yep.
Okay. And we, we're not, we're not, there's no issues with raising the height of this? Structurally, that's, that's cool.
Structurally, it'd be fine. I'll work with, I talked to Mr. Fanner today and he's going to help us out with that site plan and get that all done.
All right. And we're going to be able to see people come in their chairs, all be in the same elevation? We, we feel comfortable that...
I feel comfortable. By raising it twenty-four inches, yes. Yep. Better than if it was flat. At least, yeah, absolutely. That was a concern.
Yeah, and keep in mind, it's not, it's not theater where it's perfect rows of chairs too.
No, I understand.
You know, you're looking around, you know, there's lawn chairs and blankets and people are kind of spread out. So you can pick your slot to see the stage and you don't have to see everyone's feet necessarily unless we're putting on a production of Celtic Thunder or something.
So, so why can we put it in this location and not on the side of the hill? Where are the boundaries of the restrictions?
Yes, there's a designed special recreation area that comes in from the McCook's, the main beach side inward is five hundred feet. And then how it goes around the point to the Hole in the Wall beach is two hundred feet. So in that area is a special recreation area, it's called, where we have to maintain and preserve. We have the Memorial Cross there that's in the deed that we have to maintain. The cup rock, the glacial stone, the flagpole, there's some things that we have done to that. In that area, we can't build anything. This is now outside of that area. So there's an area that they left open that we're able to, to put some structures.
I just have a hard time because all I have is the motion. I can't visualize it. I can't, anything. I'm wondering, would it interfere? What uses does it interfere with that are currently there? Is there a playground there? Am I off the bat? Is it interfering with...
It's where it all got recently seeded.
Right. It's the flat grass area that's below the pavilion. And it's pushed back enough, so there's probably eighty yards still of open grass there that'll be...
So it's not going to impact any of the recreational areas that are currently existing?
Absolutely nothing. Yep.
Do we need it now that it's put in an area that doesn't make it spectacular?
Oh, absolutely.
Having bands or playing anywhere?
I think it's going to be tremendous.
The facility will be spectacular.
I can just see Celebrate East Lime and the bands playing there.
Did the picture of the, of the event, yeah. So can picture that. Again, if you're standing below the pavilion and looking at the train tracks that will sit there covering what was the train tracks and, yeah, actually blocking that. And not blocking spectacular views from the boardwalk and Hole in the Wall, which is a good point.
You know, we looked at it...
I do like wrecking the, sorry.
I looked at it tonight and, Beth, I think it's a, that was...
I think I was bothering people a little bit.
Yes. A couple of years ago, when this first came about, that was the location that we kind of picked out. And then this other location came where we had the natural amphitheater, the sloping hill. It looked like it was going to be the right place, but we can't do it there. So now we're back to kind of our original location.
Put something in here for a reason.
How about neighbors? Are we...
The music's going to go to Orient Park.
Right, but there's, I, from what you described, I could, I can visualize that. But still, there's going to be some sound coming out of there. Do we know what to expect from our neighbors?
Yeah, most of our concerts go six to eight P.M. And then we will abide by the town's noise ordinance.
Okay, so there is noise.
We're not going to go past ten o'clock. We, I can't see anything. You know, Celebrate East Lime's a little bit different because it's such a, you know, big event and everything, but I can't see us going past eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
And we have electric power there, right?
We will bring, power is to the pavilion there. Actually, this is a much, much shorter run now for the electrical. Actually, it'll save us some decent money, actually, not bringing that electrical all the way down there.
So that's included in this cost, sixty thousand?
The six, it's actually seventy-five because remember, there's fifteen thousand in the capital improvement plan.
Oh, so this is, it's going to be...
This is just to move the sixty thousand dollars into the capital non-recurring account. Am I right, Annas? It's just to move that money over to the...
This looks like a blown-up version of what you see on the town green, the pavilion.